I'd like to call to honor the regional city council meeting Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. First order of business, invocation by Pastor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. of the Greater Brandon Chapel, Bishop and Baptist Church, 1121 Brandon Chapel Road, Alton, Virginia. He's also the president of the ministerial alliance of Reevesville as a senator and a chaplain at the regional police department. Dr. Galloway.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that everyone pray. Father God, as we come tonight, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for another opportunity, God, to be in another council meeting. Father God, I want to pray tonight for our mayor and all of the council members, God, as they conduct your business tonight. God, I want to pray and ask you, Lord, that everything that is said and done in this meeting tonight will be done not only to your glory but for the benefit of this great city of Reevesville and for the great citizens that live in it. Do it right now, God, and we will be so grateful to give your name all the praise, the honor, and all of the glory. In Jesus' name we do pray and ask it all, that everybody say, "Amen."
Could we all rise with the pledge of blessing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Barbara, as a native, she will vote on the slip rule tonight. She has some interest in this one.
They must be doing flag allegiance.
And there she is. Next order of business, a proclamation and recognition for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, January 15th, 2025. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a native of Atlanta, Georgia, was tragically killed at age 39 on April 4th, 1968, in Memphis, Tennessee, while leading sanitation workers at protest against low wages and the tolerable working conditions. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act of 1994, signed into law on August 23rd of that year by President Clinton, designates the King Federal Holiday to be a day of national service, and this year's observation, on Monday, January 15th, 2024, will be celebrated by the citizens of Reevesville, the city employees. Whereas at the heart of Martin Luther King Jr.'s philosophy was a concept of service. He believed that a person's work was not measured by his culture or class, but rather by his or her commitment to making a better life for all. It is this belief that makes the King of Service a unique holiday, because of its challenges, it challenges the workers not only to remember and to celebrate, but also, most importantly, to act and address the issues for which Dr. King and others gave their lives. It's tough to read this particular proclamation because of what Dr. King meant to us all. Now therefore, I, Donald Ilbo, Mayor of the City of Reevesville, and the regional city council, do hereby recognize Monday, January 15th, 2024, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Reevesville, and continue to urge all citizens to join as we rededicate ourselves to the principles of justice and equality for all in memory of the apostle John Vowles, who gave his life in the crusade for human rights. This is the ninth day of January, 2024. It's kind of sad to say that this is 2024, but we still have a whole lot of things that need to change. Dr. Galloway, would you like to add a word?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and council members, and my brothers and sisters today. We want to thank God again for the opportunity to have this day, MLK Day. It's very important that we continue to carry on the legacy. As you know, Dr. King was a very influential man, God, who not only cared for the African-American race, but he cared for anyone that was socially and racially oppressed. We do want to mention on behalf of the ministerial alliance that we will have three events that we will be doing during this MLK weekend, starting Sunday at 5:00 PM at the Jerusalem United Holy Church, where we'll have our annual MLK scholarship and unity service. Then we'll have our commemorative speech on the steps of City Hall at 1:30 on Monday, January 15th, with Elder Kim Moyer being our speaker. And then after that, we'll have our memorial service at the Elmo Road Baptist Church at 3:00 PM, where Pastor Johnny Freeman will be our speaker. So we thank God for the opportunities that he has given, afforded us, and through Dr. King, we're going to try to keep that dream alive. Thank you.
Next order of business, approval of the consent agenda. We have two items. Does anyone on council who'd like to have one pulled? If not, I'll take a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, then a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Ms. Barbara?
Yes.
Ms. Barbara? Say the one we can call, associate.
Can you hear us? This is a [inaudible]. All right. She voted in the affirmative and I'm going to leave my phone on. So does she can hear? If she works out.
Okay.
Oh, she does. Barbara, see if she can hear through the computer. Can you hear us now?
She might be on mute, because we could hear her earlier.
We could hear you earlier.
Low, clear.
Should be around. She called you. We should sound. Can someone speak up and then beep for someone right here.
Ms. Barbara, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to hang up the phone, but if you can talk to me, I will call you back. Okay, somebody, I can do a hang up this phone. I won't hang up this phone, because you should be able to hear through the computer. Okay.
Ms. Barbara, can you hear me?
Did you just hear someone speak?
I think she's hearing her through the phone.
Yeah, I think you're hearing first through the computer.
Technology of 2024.
You're always paying, so I'm sorry. She unmute and see if you can hear after that, okay? All right.
Ms. Barbara, can you hear us? Ms. Barbara?
No, I can't hear anything.
Next order of business, is a public hearing. Consideration of a rezoning request for a property located 701 Montgomery Street, specifically Rockland County Tax Parcel 150268, from neighborhood business to residential six, Z 2023-02, enclosure one, Jason Harden, Public Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor of Council and City Manager. Good evening. Trans High Alvo is petitioning to rezone a property located in [inaudible].
From [inaudible]. Select the same [inaudible]. Not allocation, select by [inaudible]. From [inaudible]. Select after previous. During [inaudible]. From [inaudible]. Select the third one. From [inaudible]. Select by [inaudible]. Select [inaudible]. Select [inaudible]. Select after previous. Use [inaudible]. Select [inaudible]. Select the third one. From [inaudible]. Select by [inaudible]. Select [inaudible]. Select [inaudible]. Select [inaudible]. Select after previous. Use [inaudible]. Select [inaudible]. Select [inaudible]. Select [inaudible].
Our apologies, sir. I apologize.
Thank you again. Trans High Alvo is petitioning to rezone a property located at 701 Montgomery Street, Rockland County Tax Parcel number 150268, from neighborhood business to residential six, R6, the stockin number Z 2023-02. The parcel encompasses an area of 7,840.8 square feet or 0.18 to the acre. A vacant two-story commercial building constructed in 1917 per the tax record is located on the lot. Residential dwellings are allowed in the neighborhood business district only as an accessory to a commercial use. In other words, a business would need to be the primary use with a residential component as an accessory, so it wouldn't be able to be a principal use residential structure as it is currently. The surrounding land use is a mix of neighborhood business and residential six. The areas to the south and the east are zoned residential six, R6. To the north and the west, the abutting lots are zoned neighborhood business and residential six. Overall, the area is primarily residential with a few commercial properties in the area as well. Considering the presence of an abutting residential six, neighborhood to the south and consistency with the surrounding land use, the zoning designation of R6 for the property would be consistent with the surrounding area. The property is located in growth management area two of our [inaudible] land development plan from 2022, which encompasses the area immediately outside of the central business district. So, growth management area two prioritizes expansion of housing stock alternatives, rehabilitation of existing housing stock, and preservation of significant historic structures. Therefore, we find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2022 reasonable land development plan. The planning staff finds this rezoning is reasonable and in developed interest based on the information provided in our report, and the planning staff recommended the proposed rezoning application be approved. A planning board unanimously recommended the proposed rezoning be approved. Now I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions for Jason? Public hearing opens at 6:15. Does anyone here who'd like to speak for? Does anyone here who'd like to speak against? Public hearing closes at 6:16. Any discussion amongst council? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, Mayor, that the rezonation.
That's an approved motion.
What's approved? Don't count.
It's approved.
All right, Mayor, to the city council, I make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specific parcels to the requesting zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda package submitted during the rezoning presentation and may be amended, incorporated to the motion to be included in the minutes. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
End of discussion. Those in favor of the approval, raise your hand.
I'm tapped to only do this.
It's announced. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a special use permit request to place a manufactured house or home on a vacant property located on Hill Street, specifically Rockland County Tax Parcel 154106, S 2023-3, enclosure two. Jason.
Thank you again, Mayor, Councilman, and Manager. Michael C. Rodriguez has applied for a special use permit, HUP, for a vacant property located on Hill Street, specifically parcel number 154106. The applicant requests an approval to place a manufactured home at this location. The property is residential six, R6, and manufactured homes are allowed with a special use permit. Michael C. Rodriguez is the applicant and the property owner. The standards and the ordinance for manufactured homes on single lots are as follows. Mobile homes slash manufactured homes on single lots must be built to HUD standards, National Mobile Home Construction and Safety Standards Act. Each unit must have been constructed within five years of the date of issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance, and must have a seal of compliance per general statute 143-144. Each unit must further comply with the following criteria. The manufactured home has a length not exceeding four times its width, and the pitch of the manufactured home's roof has a minimum vertical rise of 2 and 2 tenths feet for each 12 feet and 4 tonne roll, and the roof is finished with shingles. The exterior siding consists predominantly of vinyl or aluminum, horizontal lap siding, wood or hardwood. A continuous permanent masonry curtain or foundation, an unpierced except for ventilation and access, is installed under the manufactured home, but the tongue actels and removable towing apparatus and transporting lights are removed after final placement on the site. A porch at least 16 square feet in size, and it is 4 feet by 4 feet in dimension, and its stairs must be attached to the front entrance of the home in a workmanship manner that meets the North Carolina's [inaudible]. The applicant is required to meet these criteria in addition to any conditions placed on the special use permit. Council must come to certain findings. You swear.
I don't know. I'm trying to get your attention.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, if there's...
Yeah.
Everybody's in the [inaudible].
Yeah.
All right, if there's anyone who's planning to speak at this public hearing, I need to swear that I'm, because it's a special use permit. Is there anyone that's planning to speak with the applicant?
I'm the applicant.
All right, so swear that anything you're going to say today, the whole truth, and that's about the truth that I've got.
The applicant is required to meet these criteria in addition to any conditions placed on the special use permit. Council must come to certain findings and facts regarding the impact of the development on the area. It is the applicant's responsibility to provide evidence and materials that will allow the council to take the appropriate action. The board may also recommend conditions on the application to ensure that the proposed project meets the intent of zoning wardens. The following are the specific findings of fact from the zoning wardens which council must find. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity. The location and the character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with the land development plan for retail land, its extraterritorial jurisdiction. The planning staff recommends the following conditions be placed on the special use permit. The use shall comply with the special use criteria for manufactured slash mobile homes for the reasonable zoning wardens, and the unit shall comply with the North Carolina State Building code. The planning staff unanimously recommended the special use permit be approved with the staff recommended conditions, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Public hearing will open at 6:22. Anyone who'd like to speak for, Mr. Ross Reed, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes. Thank you. Would you like to be first to go? And I came from Miami, my mom lives here, and I fell in love with Cedar Reevesville. I bought a house not so far from here, 304 Hugh Street. I bought the house, I believe, like $50,000. I sold the house about a few months ago for $200,000. It was not the house that I wanted, and I made a mistake, but I sold it as a beautiful house. Anyways, I purchased an old home, also very close here, like I said, I love the city, and I purchased that house for like $30,000, and I invested $160,000 in the house. Love the house, I want to leave with this home. Unfortunately, I'm having a little issue. There's a funeral home right across the street from this house that I just finished, and it's very sad to come to my house. Most of the time, they block in my driveway whenever they have to service an funeral home, and I really don't feel comfortable coming and telling these people to get the cars out of the way. So I also own an half an acre, which is this property that we're talking about here, and I just bought this mobile home. It's almost new and very beautiful as well. I brought a bunch of pictures of the jobs that I've done here in the city before and the after, and the idea, the plan for this manufactured home that I'm bringing to this half acre, which is also a few blocks away from here, maybe like five minutes away actually, so I'm very, I'll be very happy if you guys can approve this for me. Thank you very much.
Everyone who was going to speak had to be sworn in. I mean, did any of you have any questions?
Mayor, I had a question.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Either him or Jason might can answer this question, but in the packet, under the requirements, it was all about the masonry curtain, and then the pictures in here show a vinyl underneath. Is it supposed to be brick underneath or is it going to be vinyl?
No. The idea is like, well, let me actually show you that to answer a bit of that question. This is the, show you. And it's, yeah, it's all concrete, it's very beautiful, so I'd like to share it with you guys. It's all going to be concrete, and I have a professional company that's going to do all the insulation. I will stick to all the rules and regulations for Cedar Reevesville, and I will be professional with God.
That's beautiful.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jason, again.
Any other question? Public hearing will close at 6:25. As Jason said, we have to go through the findings of fact, and then vote on each one of the four. Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. Those in favor?
Ms. Barbara, were you in favor of the first finding of fact? Yes. Yes.
Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Those in favor?
The second finding of fact? Yes. Yes.
Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity. Those in favor, raise your hand.
The third finding of fact? Yes. Yes.
And finally, the location and the character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will not, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the land development plan for Reevesville and its surroundings. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, now we have to have a motion as to the approval of the special use permit. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It was a tie.
Okay.
End of discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Can we approve the special use permit? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
All right, next we have consideration of a request to rezonate vacant parcel located off South Park Drive, specifically Rockland County Tax Parcel 173833, from residential 20 to conditional zoning residential 20. A public hearing was held on this island on November 14th, but the vote was delayed by council for further consideration. CZ 2023-02, enclosure three. Jason Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel in danger. Just to give counsel a recap on this application, council considered the application, as the mayor said at the December meeting, and held the required public hearing as required by the North Carolina general statutes. Just to give a brief, very brief recap on the application, just for council's information, Belmont Estates LLC petitioned to rezone a vacant parcel located off the South Park Drive, Rockland County County tax parcel number one seven three eight three three from residential twenty to conditional zoning residential twelve. The public hearing was held on this item on November fourteenth, but the vote was delayed by council for further consideration. CZ twenty twenty-three dash oh two, enclosure three. Jason Hall. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel in danger. Just to give counsel a recap on this application, council considered the application, as the mayor said at the December meeting, and held the required public hearing as required by the North Carolina general statutes. Just to give a brief, very brief recap on the application, just for council's information, Belmont Estates LLC petitioned to rezone a vacant parcel located off the South Park Drive, Rockland County County tax parcel number one seven three eight three three from residential twenty, R twenty, to conditional zoning residential twelve, CZ R twelve. The requested conditions included allowable land uses to be townhomes only, so that means the land uses restricted to townhomes exclusively. And provided in connection to the existing city of reasonable JCPark Greenway as a development condition. No other use conditions have been requested by the applicant, and all other development standards for the R twelve zoning district shall apply. The applicant has provided a conditional zoning master plan as required by the ordinance. The planning staff did recommend that the application be approved based off the nice location and growth management area number three of the land development plan, which is pretty primarily for residential development, and goal number three of the reasonable development plan to expand available housing stock. The planning board unanimously recommended that the proposed rezoning, conditional zoning application be denied. All that remains is for the council to take whatever action it desires for this application. I'll be glad to answer any questions if that's the will of council.
There were some questions that came about in reference to perhaps some single level homes. Could you elaborate on that?
That would be a question for the applicant because conditions added have to be voluntarily accepted by the applicant, but that's North Carolina general statute law. So I would defer that question to the applicant as far as if you wanted to add it at this point. So you have a couple of options. If the applicant chooses to add voluntarily, again, adds the conditions to the application, council can either refer it back to the planning board for reconsideration, or council can give them, can approve it with the stipulation that the rezoning is only effective if they submit within whatever time period council sees fit. I would recommend ten days, but whatever time period you see fit, to submit in writing that they will adhere to the condition, and the rezoning will only be effective if they submit in writing that they will adhere to the condition that council has asked and that they have voluntarily approved to. So that's your two options at this point as far as adding any conditions. Or of course, you can vote to approve or deny as it is.
Is there anyone here tonight that can answer to that particular question?
I believe Andrew. Andrew Wallace, the applicant is here. If you'd like to.
My name is Bo Carpenter. I'm an attorney who represents the applicant here. Mr. Andrew Wallace is here. I'm asking the applicants. The, my understanding, and I'll ask Andrew if he has to elaborate, that that condition is just not gonna work with this particular project. It's not gonna be feasible to do a single-story townhome or single-family residential with this particular project. We're open to other conditions, but this is not one that they can quite clearly agree to. This is, just to point out, to increase the current usage of the HADOS upright, this is just a simple rezoning of a matter. If you, so the request tonight is to approve as submitted to this council. But there are other conditions, other questions. I'm happy to take a lot of answering. Mr. Wallace is here, also answering questions in my hand. But I don't understand, I don't believe that the single-level homes are something that can easily be done. So if I'd like to do so. Andrew, elaborate.
The intent for this type of product, which was the two-story townhome, fits within the proposed builder that we have and their plan, but not only that, there's another, the proposed builder also has a development on Liberty Road that is offering quite a few, I think, close to four hundred, not close to four hundred homes, maybe a little less, and those are single-family homes, a number of which are single-level. So the intent was to keep that product there and then use the multi-family homes, two-story homes on this particular site. So I feel like that product and that desire to fill that need is being offered very close by, and we, based on our pro forma, we'd like to stick with the multi-family, the two-story. There's, the one reason we're driving that too is the amount of land that we're utilizing. I mean, we've got forty-five, forty-four plus acres, so we're trying to convince that and use the two-story, whereas ten of, almost eleven of those acres will be established as protected area, possibly even conservations. That's, that's the intent right now.
Basically, you're gonna have thirty-three, thirty-four, eight building blocks.
There, there is more, but we've, we've been at the suggestion to town and also our pro forma utilizing only thirty of those, thirty-one somewhere in that neighborhood. The final drawings aren't complete, but I think that R twelve, or the R twelve allows us to go up to four hundred plus units, and we are stopping at two hundred units and utilizing the rest of that area as conservations. And again, offering another product through the home builder that we're proposing on another site. Yeah, and I think, right, half cables is reminding me too, in our development, our initial plan, that the greenways in that easement down along Troublesome Creek, we are not only proposing in that, in that application to connect to the existing greenway, but extending the greenways through our property, through an easement or whatever means is available to you all, then the sidewalks to the, to the high school. Where we can commit, these are some of the conditions if you wish to talk about and willing to implement.
Now, at the last meeting that happened in November, you were talking about, I think, the builder, and you talked about D.R. Horton.
Yeah.
Is that who you've decided to go with or is it somebody else?
No. We have not signed a contract with them. We've been working with them even further since the last meeting, but it is, we have not signed a block purchase agreement with them as of yet.
So I'm just curious, because you gave a thing on the TV screen that said it was D.R. Horton that built these homes. If, if you don't go with D.R. Horton, how will they be built then? Are you planning on building these yourself or other contractor?
Yeah, there will be another production builder agreeing with it, but something similar to those.
Yeah.
Materials would be similar. Roof lines would be similar.
Gotcha.
So as the zoning sits now, you couldn't build your, you couldn't build your homes, how many homes could you build there now with the zoning that's currently there?
I can answer it. So currently in our, in our twenty, so townhomes are allowed in our twenty with a special use permit right now. So it's slightly lower density, you're limited to about three point seven units an acre. So you could do probably, I think, around one hundred and forty-one, what?
One forty-one, one forty-two.
Something, it was something, something to that effect. So all the R twelve does is it increases the density slightly and it gets around fifty more units. So basically what the applicant's asking for is about fifty more units than what's allowed with special use permit.
I thought you said you could build four hundred based off the R twelve.
That's if you want to maximize it.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't want to maximize it. We just want to go to two hundred.
If they adhere to the, the stop R twelve.
Two hundred or one ninety-four, I believe, I'm not, excuse me. Last time you said two fifteen. So I heard one ninety-four or two hundred, two fifteen.
The current plan that we submitted that was at one ninety-four, and speaking with Fire Marshal, Public Works, D.R. Horton, ourselves, the sweet spot is right at two hundred, and we would be willing to cap at that.
You've been involved with this the whole time, right? Back in two thousand and six, right?
Two thousand and six.
So when it was rezoned before to start building, wasn't there discussion about mixed of townhomes and single-levels?
At that time, there was, but the EQ, Department of Environmental Quality just revised their guidelines, and we could not encroach nearly as close to Troublesome Creek as we could then.
So you know the actual building acreage there? I'm just curious, how many buildable acres are there if you maximize it? You're saying you're taking away?
If you maximize it, it's forty-two acres to maximize it. We don't want to build on forty-two acres.
But you, you can't build on all forty-two acres, can you, because of the creek that runs through there and the watershed?
That's right. Setbacks.
So I'm asking, taking all of that out, how many buildable acres you have? Thirty, twenty-eight?
At two hundred units, we're gonna do about twenty-eight acres. So there's roughly fifteen acres that's not gonna be touched.
But you, you couldn't touch that fifteen acres anyways?
We could go further if we put larger retaining walls.
We have no desire.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm saying. How much further can you go if, so if you did maximize, you've got twenty-eight acres as it is without having to put in retaining walls and that type stuff? But if you did, how many buildable acres are there?
About forty-two. You can buy into the Wetland Act. I mean, you can pay into the Wetland Act and do, do all that crap, that doesn't matter to nothing, but.
Yeah, it's money to the houses.
So we're gonna touch twenty-eight acres for two hundred homes. The difference in a hundred and forty-one units and two hundred units, there's nothing. The traffic studies say everything, it doesn't even affect a fraction.
Yeah, I, I don't care about the traffic studies. This is, the road there for ten thousand plus vehicles daily. But what I do care about is the planning board voted it down unanimously. We haven't had a single person in the community speaking out in favor of four of this, and reasonable has multiple projects in the works, you know, for over four hundred and some apartments, which in my opinion would be essentially the same thing as, as townhomes, same type of living. So we got four hundred apartments that can go in behind food line right there near, we have two hundred and some apartments that are getting ready to be built off of Holiday Loop Road, so it's six hundred some apartments roughly. And then the project that you were speaking of on Liberty Road, Liberty Road, it's four hundred and eighty homes that are gonna be, that are gonna be in a, in what I believe to be a more affordable housing.
But it's actually a thousand units.
Yeah.
To be, uh.
But they have four eighty right now.
Just a thousand.
Permitted.
For the home thing.
Yeah.
For the last all four phases.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Which is gonna be low, lower-end homes. I'm not saying that, I don't disagree that we may not have a need for this type housing, multi, two-story housing, but I think there are locations where such housing as this fits in certain neighborhoods. And I don't believe, in my opinion, that those type housing belongs in this neighborhood. I think there, and there's opportunities for growth in reasonable, and there are places that, that these, in my opinion, would fit better in. I'm not against growth, I'm not against you building, but I don't think that these projects fit into this, into this neighborhood, given the surroundings of it. Also, there's no R twelve adjacent or adjoining to any of this property as well right now. There is some away, but nothing adjacent or joining or inside of it, so I don't agree, you know, I don't agree with that. And I just don't think it fits in there for.
So you got the reasonable high schools. They're booming. They're growing, booming, we got it, love it, I eat it up. So all these young, young athletes come to Reedsville, and we've offered to build greenways, put in sidewalks, get into the high schools and holding our yards, and there's teachers there. And, you know, if we need to build something down the road, we want the property down the road, but it comes a different financial area or realm to build single-family townhomes. If the single-family people want to be on McCoury and Liberty, that's, that's over there. That's two miles away.
The complaint, the complaints that I have heard from everyone here and even referring back to the planning zone, planning board meeting where they unanimously that denied it, is they don't want townhomes in the area. And everyone that I've spoken to individually has no problem, and they're aware that this property has potential to be developed with housing, but, and I wouldn't have a problem with developing it with, with housing or, or with single-level townhomes that are on the more nicer scale. And it is, in my opinion, that this is one of our most highest real estate areas and our nice areas, so people are looking for comparable housing, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus, you know, in that area. And the people in this neighborhood are the ones who have to deal with this. But we have a lot of housing going on throughout the community right now, projects to be built. And I don't see, whereas if we don't build two hundred townhomes, then it is going to affect us financially nor affect the impact of jobs that will come into this community without this particular project. But what it will affect is a lot of people in the neighborhood who've been there, who don't want it. And there's no zoning that is adjacent or adjoining that matches what you're requesting. It's all R twenty, there's no R twelve nowhere near that, near that area.
Well, it was R twelve until two years ago.
It was R twelve, if my understanding was over, when special use was incorporated in that, but it was originally R twenty. You applied for R twelve with special use to build a smorgasbord of different type housing in there, then you took it back from that to the R twenty to try to back up and repunt to rezon to the R twelve with no special use or no other contingencies that you requested the two hundred townhomes.
So financially, on the real estate side, you can't make it work. It's financially impossible to do it. And with, you put in two hundred units, hundred and forty units on board, you put in two hundred units, you bring in eight hundred thousand dollars in tax revenues to the city. We're giving them hundred thousand dollars in greenways, you give them fifty thousand dollars in sidewalks, upfitting roads, everything to give it back.
But if, if.
But you can't turn around and say, here's a hundred and forty units. It financially doesn't, it doesn't do anything.
I didn't ask you to build a hundred and forty units. What I'm saying is, is under R twelve, unless you had, unless you.
We're voting on zoning.
Correct. So R twenty, which is gonna allow you to build housing or with special use, would allow you to build a certain amount of townhomes that would fit in the parameters of the buildable acreage there. It doesn't fit in terms of, I agree from a business decision, if you maximize.
But do you build low-income housing? Do you put low-income housing? Just, we can go in there all day long, build fifty thousand dollar houses all day long, and put just.
If it's approved through the planning board.
You got a hundred and forty units.
Huh?
We have a hundred and forty units. It's already approved. We're trying to give a great product and give it back to the city and say, here it is, here's your million dollars, and we're trying as hard as we can.
But what I'm saying is, is the people in the community don't want it, but this is just my opinion. I'm just saying they're gonna vote for or against. I'm telling you how I feel and what everybody else feels, you know? And so I'm obviously not for it, you know? I feel that my job, my job is to represent the people who elected me into this position, but my job is also to create growth. But my job is also to create growth and, like you said, look for tax dollars. But with all the other projects that we have coming up in the city in terms of housing, we're not close to a thousand, well, just a thousand when the four acres, the four phases over there, but with the apartment complexes and all these things. And there are certain locations where these type of projects fit. To me, I feel like you're putting low-income housing into your nice neighborhood. You know, it's a two fifty thousand dollar home.
This is good.
Fifteen hundred square feet.
Can you imagine the students that's going to go to Reesville High School, that's going to live there? Reesville High School is top of the food chain. I'll watch the football, watch the basketball. They're top of the food chain. They're going to live there. They're going to come.
But we're all entitled, and they have other options, is what we're all entitled to, our people.
I love that comment. And I know that we, it keeps being mentioned about what happened two years ago or whatever. And we know, as a business owner, I know that costs are tremendously higher now than they were two years ago. You cannot come in here and build what you were going to do two years ago and make a profit. And if you can't make a profit, then you don't want to be in business. I understand that exactly. It's already approved. You could come in and build a hundred and forty-four units. And you're asking permission to do fifty more units.
That's it. So not four hundred.
She's.
Right. I understand that. And I also want to say that all of these apartments that are around the high school, nobody wanted those either. But now they're there and we have filled them up. There's nothing available. These are going to be townhouses that are for sale. They're, it's not rental property. It will be owned, it will be owned so people that live there will be vested in that property. And my understanding is that your average selling point is going to pretty much be equal to the houses that are around the areas. So it's not like you're coming in with a low income or low-valued homes.
So the townhomes that are selling point, what I was told are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
They are.
Less than fifteen hundred square feet roughly.
I think it's close to, you're right on the square foot, but the dollar value is more likely than two twenty-five.
So less than two fifty, two twenty-five. So we're saying the average home in that.
Well, I live in that area and I don't have a problem. I live in that area. There's a lot of homes in that area that range all different prices. There's homes that's been there for years and years and years and there's homes that people have just built. So it is a very diverse community.
Depending on what area you're in there, I've actually spoken to three different Realtors that pulled home sales and averages in the neighborhood. And we had a gentleman that spoke at the last meeting and pulled comps for the sales in that neighborhood. So I didn't just listen to him. I actually reached out to two other Realtors by listening to what he said that night. And the average home sales in that area are closer to the five hundred thousand dollar range when you pull comps in that area, not two twenty-five.
Are they selling acres or buying acres?
Both. That's why I took, that's why I got opinions from three different Realtors from a standpoint of what we needed from a Realtor's standpoint, what would sell, what wouldn't sell. And you were speaking that people will purchase these homes and they're not rental property. There's nothing that prevents this from being rental property. And in my opinion, a fifteen hundred square foot townhome that sells for two twenty-five dollars is going to be no different than that of the apartment complexes that are already located behind Food Line there. And that's, that's just my opinion.
Well, we're pro-Reesville. We're pro-Reesville High School.
I appreciate that.
We support, I live here.
I live too.
I live here. Grew up here, lived here, Oldham Yards, and I am pro-Reesville High School, Reesville. I support them one hundred percent. And if we continue the Reesville booming the way it is, I'm all on it. I will support it, dump into it, everything.
But what we don't, what we don't have been built in the Reesville area or not many places in Rockingham County that people are looking for, such as Karina Employees and stuff, the Casino employees out of Davenport, the executives and the higher up people, they're looking for more expensive housing. And the tax revenue offset from sixty houses versus, you know, the, talking eight hundred thousand dollars. It's not going to beat eight hundred thousand dollars. So if you build homes in there, we might get five hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue if there's homes.
Can't build no homes.
How do they build the homes in Pine State Dairy across the road? Somebody made money. They built and developed that area.
Where are yours go?
Yeah, I understand. I'm a contractor myself too, doing commercial work, traveling, have the whole license involved with the state. So I very understand developmental processes and building and making money from a business. But there's money to be made, but it's your business decision of what you choose and build and make that money. There's not the same amount of money to be made versus building those homes versus building two hundred townhomes. Because if there was no money to be made in building homes or making buildings like that, we wouldn't have contractors building that type of stuff in the area now. We got a forty-eight house, forty-eight houses to go.
We're zoning a hundred forty units and adding fifty to it. That's it.
Jason, I want to ask you a question. When we spoke about this R twenties other than R twelve, you taught me as it stood, if I understood you correctly, that they can build houses in here without a special use permit.
Yes. And R twenty, single-family homes are allowed right?
They cannot build a hundred and forty units in this R twenty without being granted a special use permit and applying for townhomes.
For townhomes.
Correct. So you cannot build a hundred and forty townhomes in here in R twenty unless you are granted a R twenty special use permit. Straight zoning, you cannot. And there is no special use permit, but this is a straight R twenty right now. When you had it rezoned, you rezoned it back to R twenty. So I want to be clear, a hundred and forty townhomes cannot be built on this property without him going back through planning and zoning and requesting a special use permit. Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. If we make a motion to leave this R twenty, he can build whatever houses will allow him to fit on the buildable acres, whether it's twenty-eight acres or retaining walls or whatever he chooses to do, correct?
That's me knowing lots of.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-some thousand square feet, so roughly a house per half acre. You have twenty-eight buildable acres in there. You can build two houses per acre roughly.
Now, Jason, when we started, didn't you explain to us what would happen about whether we approved it or disapproved it as far as it didn't have, you didn't mention it would have to go back to planning board?
It's not. No, you can, of course, you can deny it as it is and it's done. If you deny it as it is, if you, the part I mentioned going back to planning board was if you wanted to, there was going to be agreed upon conditions between council and the applicant.
Other than what we, what is.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's why we have to go back to.
But based on what is written, if it's approved tonight, it does not go back to planning board?
No.
Thank you.
If I could clarify one point that council members may make. It is true that if you don't approve this, a hundred forty units would have to go through the special use process. You need a permit. But that's a very different process than what's before you now.
Correct.
You don't have the discretion you do tonight, as you would have in the special use permit process. Who would build should be confident that we can build a special use permit process. Council will have a choice to approve as a matter of law. If you don't, that would appeal all the way up through. This is, this is the one night you guys have to have any say really in what this is going to look like. And I get the hesitancy of townhomes. This is the new building project that's coming on board, not just here, but across the state. I've worked in titling four or five of these over the last year. Townhomes are not something that's ever been built over the last thirty, forty years. People are comfortable seeing the same in single-family homes. But it's gotten to a point where it's not affordable for people to build single-family detached homes at an affordable price or even buy, especially as a residential home. And so the only way to do it economically is to build this called missing middle housing, which are townhomes, duplexes and whatnot. And the city of Asheville, which is where I come from, just did a new study on it, a multi-million dollar study, and they're committed to the building of townhomes. City of Reesville now has now promoted the building of townhomes. These are homes for people who can't afford the same homes that the CEOs can afford.
Correct.
These are people, these are homes for people who want to buy, but they can't own a single-family detached home. These are, these are homes for people who, even in my generation, older generation, you know, coming up. You see a poor home for two fifty, two twenty for this. It's not, that's not out there in the state anymore. So this project's meant to address that, this is the bill. And if not only wants to do this, it's being done across the state, across the country. And so this is a chance for Reesville to be the front end of the building of townhomes, which is what's happening across the nation. And again, I get the hesitancy. Townhomes are new. We used to build them back in the fifties and sixties.
I don't have a problem with townhomes. I just said there are other buildable properties where there would be less, I don't know if animosity is the correct word for this, in terms of the people in the neighborhood and better suited neighborhoods for a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar townhome. And that's my opinion. I want to ask you a question. So you said that this is our opportunity to have a say in this. You feel confident that if we deny this, you would make the appeal for a special use permit for the hundred and forty townhomes. Well, if you've done that, that's still your choice. But you just said that even reducing the number and building number is not feasible for them anyway. So regardless of what it is, but you also made a statement that we wouldn't get any say that, you alluded that you could take this to court, try the rezoning, R twenty under special use permit, and then just immediately start building and we would get no say in the construction or the layout when the planning zone department, everyone makes approvals to what you have. So when we submit these plans and they do it, build apartments all over the state and all up down the East Coast, they make you come back and make changes to development. So whether it's commercial or residential property, so we do get a say. Explain to me what you mean by we don't then, if I'm wrong in what I said.
Yeah, so special use permit process is a statutory process where as long as the applicant meets certain conditions, you have to approve as a matter of law. Actually, conditions is the longer word. It's not conditions. It's if they meet the building code, not the ordinance, they can build it. And the people, the, 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 the words of word adjustment that insights this.
But you said ordinance and the ordinance come from municipalities.
Correct.
Correct. So he has to meet our ordinances to build a hundred and forty homes.
Correct.
If the courts granted him, even if he applied for a special use permit and wanted, and we denied a special use permit, he has to conform to whatever ordinances that we have in place for that area to build this. He doesn't just. So you made a statement that alludes to the rest of the people, the rest of council members, that he can still just come and construct here a hundred and forty townhomes and we get no say. And I'm just saying that that's a little misleading. We do, he has to conform to our ordinances.
Right. And when I say you don't get a say, that's not, that's, of course you get a say. There's a process they have to go through, even after tonight, if you approve this, they have to go through the permitting process and everything to make sure it complies with the building code, the ordinance and everything else. So when I say you don't get a say, I'm talking to your council members, not the city of Reesville.
And we have a say in what the ordinance is on.
Yeah.
So that's what the ordinance would be in a minute. I think, I've said all I have to say. I think everybody knows where I stand, the rest of council.
I have a comment. We know that we are behind the ball when it comes to housing in Reesville. There is such, you know, there's apartments are not available. We have very low inventory for houses to sell. But we also know what's coming with the casino and so many people. Our goal has always been to get professional people to come to Reesville. They can work anywhere they want. We would like for them to live in Reesville. And this is what they're looking for. I've lived in a townhouse, you know, for years. Professional, young professional people, they don't want yards to mow. They want a very small area that they have to take care of. And everything that I've read and investigated, this is what people want.
Because you're exactly right. If this is this generation, they want to be able to walk places, have a community. And that's just not, remember that there's numerous limitations along. And the housing shortage is not a Reesville problem. It's not a Reesville problem. It's a national life problem. So I see this as a new topic. But that's all I'm saying.
I want to make one more statement here that you follow. So she said this is what the people want. But what I would say is the people that put us here in this position to make these, I haven't heard a single person, I've heard outsiders say this is what they want. And I'm saying this type is fitted and suited and I would have it with it in other locations. But I have an obligation to the people to carry out the will of the people because we're elected for the people, by the people. So we're not elected for the outsiders, you know.
I hundred percent agree. You're doing a job right now. So I did that. And I think you're asking really good questions. I'm just saying that this is, this townhome is that it's a new thing. And if all the, all the cities are really pushing this, you can go on to Greensboro and YouTube video on how they're stressing the missing middle being built.
I think we have other locations in Reesville that you could look at as an investor that would be suited for this project and would bring this, you know.
One final point that I like, is they own the property as it is. You know, that they can, they can decide off to build townhomes tonight and go back to the drawboard and build something.
Correct.
If you guys don't get any say at all, it could be some protest something. Don't think they're planning on doing that.
Correct.
They want some bit of the community, but they could. So this is your chance to have something, have a legislative say, legislative say what's happening.
Build anything you want that conforms to the ordinances.
We can make work.
And zoning, you know, as it is. Yes.
And that's true. And what we're talking about tonight, we're supposed to be voting on zoning.
That's it.
That's the only thing that we're supposed to be concerned about tonight.
Fifty more zones. All right, if there are no other questions? Any other questions? You go.
Why? Um, hold on.
Okay.
She had a question.
Isn't our objective to look at what Reesville needs rather than to grow? Because we're wanting to bring more businesses here. And as Teresa said, mostly all people do not want housing.
That's correct.
Those are two-story townhouses.
That's correct.
So are we holding ourselves back if we don't go ahead and expand?
So I assumed that the question would be directed to you. With all the houses that we have, a thousand houses to be built, the project on Holiday Loop, South Park, Sherwood Drive, four hundred apartment units going there, seems like maybe we're already have committed projects fast and ready to expand housing by close to two thousand homes.
And we're the first to bring around.
Minus the, minus these two hundred townhomes, you know, that are already in the works. So there's no way that I'm not against growth in Reesville. I'm against growth. I think growth needs to be done in a manner that, that there are certain ways to grow and there are certain ways. And we also have a duty to our constituents to follow through the order with them. It would be different if we had no other projects going and we were stagnant, no other housing. But we have all housing in general and affordable housing and that type of stuff already taking place to attract growth and that is going to allow us to bring in more citizens and more people to the community. If we're based off of what Realtors said, we're, we are voting on zoning anyways. But I'm not, I'm very pro-growth for Reesville, but I'm for smart growth as well, though.
Any other questions? You open this back there.
Public comments, right? Comments for us?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, tonight we're here to vote on a zoning matter. And I'd like to get a motion.
A motion to deny. My motion to deny, as I make my motion to deny.
All right, there's been a motion to deny, is there? A second.
I would second that.
All right, those in favor of denying, raise your right hand. Twenty, twenty five. Barbara, do you vote to deny or approve? There's been a motion to deny.
Been a motion to deny, I take out, I abstain.
Okay. Two to five. With that being done, what's the next step? Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, I'll approve it.
Do I have a second?
I need to read it.
Have to examine what you have.
I make a motion to approve the proposed rezoning for the specified parcel to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those on the table, raise your right hand. Barbara, you stated on this. Those opposed? Those opposed? Five to two. gaining June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We have a separate enclosure for that, for guarantee, offering, charity, becar, or account for.
Are we hearing? I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Are we hearing? 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 I can't hear you.
So the results are audit, we audit the financial statements of the city, uh, in accordance with their respective audit standards. We also have, uh, we, it's part of the, that's all in which we provide opinion on the financial statements, that this reasonable assurance of financial statements are free from any material statement. We also audit the city's compliance with its federal, state grants, uh, that you, uh, adhered to. Uh, we do provide, uh, opinion on the compliance of those grants, um, and we issue unmodified opinions on all, uh, opinions that we had given during our audit. So that's an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and then also on your compliance with federal and state grants. An unmodified opinion is also known, it could be an opinion, it's the highest level opinion we can give under our audit standards. It's just, uh, details for you, for grants that we did that, we had one federal grant, which was recorded by our state, which was recovery funds, also known as arming funds, and then we also, that that compound, which we look at once every year, um, which they state money that you receive from government state aid, uh, for, 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 for basis.
This slide is basically saying, do you have any opinion on my life, or do you not issue any on control, or do you, uh, affect the effects of central control, or do you buy inside, buy, or issue, or, or, or? Um, I'm doing that, I'm buying, you know, all that.
And next slide here defines what material weakness is in fifty, fifty years, material weakness being the one now that we've reached a positive material weakness, that was not detected, or not, 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 not detected, that's, that could be material for the, for any phase of our grant program. And then significant issue, maybe the one, one, by them, that's material weakness, still bill or board, not too, uh, not in danger of law, or, 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 or. We didn't get no material weakness in this slide.
So I, I had, you, you, we, our, our funding, and had, had to do rec recognition of revenue. Um, rec revenue, rec recognition, prior, prior, construction, and, 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 that had been recorded on other revenue, and rec recognition, following, this is more of a capital county area, uh, based on, uh, general, county, county, amount, should have been, uh, recorded liability, one, one, year, so plus, that, 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 or, or, rather than being, uh, uh.
We had, no, no rec recognition basis, I mean, I had, one, one, other, other, I know, pretty clearly, my, 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 no, no, other rec recognition basis, and then I had, same data, uh, which would, you, you, money, I get, and, 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 and , and, 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 and,[1354.13] And the last one here is your other information, which are statistical and introductory sections, which are in front and back of your financial statements. Uh, we do not provide any, express any opinion or provide any assurance on that, but we do read the information for consistency. Upcoming GAVIs to be issued, and GAVI 100 is going to be issued next year, no major change there, uh, other than if major or non-major, but active, uh, change in presentation, how that's shown. And then GAVI 101 is your comp estate access, which is your vacation accrual, six hundred accrual, that's not going to be effective until 2025, and we'll talk with management, uh, about issuing of that statement, how it will affect the financials. Last one I have here is the local government commissioned performance indicators of concern. The local government, a couple of years ago, had, uh, developed a, a, a couple of different indicators or ratios that they want us to look at. We noted no issue with any of the ratios that they provided, uh, for the town based on the town's, uh, based on the city's financial statements. Uh, we had, uh, budgeted, we didn't have budgeted, uh, property taxes, uh, uncollected in excess of, of what budgeted, so that was good. We have positive general fund balance, we have a pre, uh, effective pre-audit process, means you don't have any budget violations, you are, you have a process to budget and uh, process per disorder, no late debt service payments or debt home issues, no statutory violations, uh, before accounting statute. And the one item is the mature weakness that we have noted, does require within 60 days of this meeting, um, for city council to sign off on a corrective action plan that Chris will provide you all with. And so with that, I will open it up and ask any questions.
So I don't think he's standing for eight months.
I don't think he can hear, uh, either.
Like I said, I'm pretty bright now, so I can't hear.
So he, he can't hear, but, um, I can get contact information, he's contacted directions on there, and all of ours, you know, work at, at your pleasure, so, um, if there's any question that you want for them, you can, you can go to record two P M, I'll just send it, you won't need to pass along, I'll be glad to do that. Uh, so, this presentation, my presentation, I know you couldn't hear all of it that well, but this is the required communications, which is really a lot of, of boilerplate stuff that they have to make sure they present to you within 45 days of the day of our audit report. And you can tell, he didn't show a single number on there for our, our audit. So we usually go into some of the details of the year end and, uh, get the historical information, all of that at our retreat. So we have the retreat next month, you'll get some financial information out of here. But if there's anything in, in any of the audit reports that you have questions about, the one thing he was talking about, material weakness, uh, that's, that's an accounting term, but it's, it's not what they found, it was related to revenue recognition. And so, as you know, we've had a lot of different rents came in, the money came in for revenue recognition plans. We recognized it as revenue when we allocated it to projects, and you have to, it was, uh, revenue recognition based on that specific grant, it's not when we allocated, it's when we actually allocated and spent it. And so all of our revenue recognition plans considered revenue replacement, because we have up to 10 million in revenue replacement, we didn't get 10 million. So it was already revenue replacement, it was already allocated to a project, but it was recognized before it was spent, so it shows it unearned. And it's correct in our financial statements, but the first drafted statements, it wasn't correct. So that's what it's about, and there's a letter that has to go to the LGC within 60 days of tonight. So we'll have that letter for you at the retreat as well. But, um, yeah, I wish, Dan was planning to be here, of course, the weather, he sat out, his office is in Charlotte, um, so he was not able to come, but, um, I've got any questions if you have, and then we'll give four questions to him, as needed. And we'll, we'll talk about some of this again at the retreat.
If you have any questions, he took care of it, he did.
And for anybody watching, and I'm a woman, and you folks here, you know, we're having a roll in pain tonight, so this is our first time somebody's doing it with him, and, uh, uh, we did do a mock, uh, some mock work in here, but, uh, it worked better than it's doing right now, so we'll, we'll tweak it and get it, uh, get a little better than it was tonight. All right.
Thank you. You did such a good job on all. Next on the agenda, or did we already have the PowerPoint? Was that part of what we just did?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's, that's different.
Uh, yeah, we did the PowerPoint, too.
Okay, PowerPoint on the 2024, uh, reval, revaluation process, enclosure four, Todd Ilhurst, Rhode Island County, Texas, Congressman.
The new council of May, um, I had, had asked Mr. Hurst, he had been instrumental in attending one of our, um, city and county managers' luncheon a couple of months ago, and as we all know, this will be your reevaluation year for Rockingham County, which will impact the city of Reedsville, we went through that process as well. So we thought it would be helpful, uh, Mr. Hurst has volunteered his time to come and at least, um, brief us on what we as the city of Reedsville, Rockingham County can kind of expect in the oncoming months as we start this process of reevaluation and how we navigate through our budget.
So that is why we're happy to have you.
We apologize to Mr. Hurst. So thank you for coming out today, so we'll turn it to you.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank y'all for having me tonight, thank you for the, uh, invitation and everything, um.
We just pulled a blood bank. Thank you.
Just let me do it for this. I'll give a little bit of, uh, background about myself while we're waiting, I've been with the, uh, tax department now for a big 17 years in anger, and, um.
You're real about to look for it.
I have 23, um, employees, fully staffed in our office. And, um, it's never, it's never done wrong, I'll say that. But, uh, we're always here to help if anyone in the room, or if y'all have some questions, you know, y'all always feel free to contact, and I'll be glad to, uh, yeah. I also have tonight would be the, uh, revaluation crew that's doing the review, this is, uh, Mike Casey, he's a project manager, um, Levi Brown, and Logan Casey, they all, they all work with the revaluation crew that's, um, doing our review here in town. Sometimes give it a little idea. Oh, it's all right, it's all right. The approval process for the, uh, 2024 schedule values is based on the, uh, I'm sorry, uh, slides. I'll just go this way. The approval process for the 24, 24 schedule values, it's, um, first of all, it's based on a, uh, the public hearing is just one of the main steps of the approval process needed to approve it, and it's, um, required by statute. Um, the 2024, um, schedule values, I have them actually available in my, in my office in the tax office. After the completion of this public hearing, which we had several weeks back, the next step is to receive the approval of the 24, 24 schedule values by the county commissioners, which that was made on December 4th, and that was all voted in by them. And then once the 2024 schedule values have been approved by the county commissioners of the 30-day appeal period, which ended on January the, the 5th. The approval process had to be all completed before January 1, 2024. In preparation of these schedule values, and due to North Carolina General Statute 105317V1, um, and by North Carolina General Statute 105286, it shall be the duty of the assessor to see that all these schedule value standards and rules to be used are at its true value and its present use value, and are prepared and are prepared sufficiently detailed to enable those making appraisals to adhere to them in appraising real property. The 2024 real property appraisal is being conducted by private contractor, I don't brace, Incorporated, and the Rockingham County Tax Assessor, myself, is responsible for ensuring the quality, uniformity, and accuracy of the reappraisal. Market value is the most profitable sales price which properties should bring in an open market with a willing and able buyer and seller both having knowledge of the value and neither being forced to either buy or sell. Market value is determined by analyzing sales in the marketplace, and our sales database we had from 2019 to 2023, this was through September, there was over 8,500 sales totally in the Rockingham County. These sales have been verified as either qualified or unqualified for examination of sales questionnaires, listings, revenue stamps, field review, and other sources. Friends and data, sales have increased throughout the entire county. Older lower valued homes have increased throughout the entire town. New and existing home sales are stronger throughout the entire county. Land throughout the entire county has increased in value. Development and expansion of subdivision from the last couple of years have, have increased. And the North Carolina DOR sales ratio study for our county showed as a, may, uh, last year now, it showed us as at 69.55%, which is probably a little lower than that now, it's probably around 65%. And in 2019, we were 100.77%. Um, the new assessed values will become effective as of January 1, 2024, and property owners will be notified of the new property values by mail in late March of 2024. Common question we always get is how much will our property value change? Property value changes will vary depending upon several factors, um, type of property, physical condition, location, there is no set, there is not a set percentage or of, uh, set value of increase or decrease that can be applied across all types of properties throughout Rockingham County. As a result, the resulting rate of property value decrease or increase will be varied. How much will, will a revaluation affect the tax bill? At this point, there is no way for us to determine how much your tax bill will be affected by revaluation. The Rockingham County Board of Commissioners, City Councils, Town Councils, and Borough Districts will set the effective tax rates by July 1 of 2024. What do I do if I do not agree with the new assessed values? An appeal can result in a no change, decrease, increase in value. We will have a online check my value tool on our county website that you can submit your appeal through if you disagree with your value. Or you can fill out and sign the appeal form with your change of value notice and promptly return it to the tax office by mail or email. If you would include documentation and the supplemental information necessary to review the appeal, if you're still not satisfied with your value, the next level of appeal is the Rockingham County Board of Equalization and Review. And if you do not agree with that, the, with the board's decision, you can appeal to the North Carolina Property Tax Commission, Raleigh, North Carolina. We do our best for the county to try to handle all of them as much as we can, you know, with them without having to go to the, to the board of review. Why do you have to fill out a form? A real estate is a constant state of change, there are approximately 55,000 tax parcels in Rockingham County. It would be impossible for the tax department to know everything about each one of them. The appeal form allows us to gather information on particular parcels and it ensures the accuracy of the information in our database. You may already have an independent appraisal of your property, you can submit with your appeal, with your appeal. These forms allows you to provide information that explains your reason for, for appeal. Allows, and allows the tax department to allocate its resources to process all appeal requests promptly and efficiently in order to save tax dollars. Here is an example of a, what the online check my value tool will show, it'll show you the different variances in the, in the properties. I haven't put it on the website now, because I'm waiting for us to update our values and everything before I, before I put it out there, but it will be out right before our notices are, are made. Valid reasons for appeals. Your assessment is substantially lower or higher than the market value of your property. Your assessment shows inequity as it relates to the assessed value of comparable properties and evidence of inaccurate data. Some invalid reasons for appeals. The percentage of change from the previous assessed value, the ability of the owner to pay the anticipated tax, there are programs available to assist the elderly or disabled with low incomes, individuals who qualify, and there are also programs out there for disabled veterans that we have. Taxpayers' opinions of value should not be based solely on the actual sales price of private appraisal of the property, and there's better evidence of a different value such as that supported by verified sales of comparable property. Appeals should not be based on the actual rents of a commercial property when rents are not reflective of the economic rent for that property type. An appeal should not be based on the income stream of a business. Thank you for having me this evening, um, that's just a brief summary, um, does anybody have any questions or?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain again the NCDOR sales ratio? I, I see, I see that, but I don't understand what ma, what makes that ratio go down, what are we comparing it to?
The North Carolina Department of Revenue sends us a set amount of sales they want us to do each year. So then they select those sales, and we have to verify the information with those sales with the, with our tax values at the current time. And then that is what they base it off, all the 100 counties on, is that sales ratio. Which that sales ratio, I'm gonna make this quick, that sales ratio is what affects our public utility. Um, we lost 249 million in public utility this year, and, uh, 1.73 million in tax value dollars. But we knew the economy, the market was going to change, so we went ahead and scheduled a reevaluation early. Because the sales ratio, if it drops below 85% or goes above 115%, the state mandates us to do a revow within three years. So we had already set ours and started it in the, um, winter of 21, but yeah, in 21, we started with the effective of 24, because we knew that if we didn't do that, the carry doll, what the, what it was going to lose in, in dollars. So of course, some areas more than others, um, but that is what the sales ratio does, does that help?
I don't understand how you lose values.
If, if a home sold, if we were 100% on value of a home in 2019, and say it sold for $100,000, now that same house sells for $150,000, our ratio is going to remain the same until the next revaluation, the same as if the market were down. So the state mandates us to do a revow every eight years by law. But then the county, we're looking at going to another full year, this is a five year because of 2019. But what happens is when it goes down and the sales start going up and our ratio's down here, the, the state mandates us to do it if it hits below that threshold. So then you lose, you see it, really see it in public utility, especially, you know, in big areas like Eden where big energy and all's in there, so you really start seeing a lot of the money lose, and then you go continually lose that money until you do a revaluation. And at the revaluation, you want to try and bring everything up sort of to the current market. So this year, we, we done something a little, little new and got it voted on a lot of minutes, was we, um, set a range in our rates, we set a rank, we do, we set a lane, a range in our land, we set a range in our main area rates for footage, because each thing has its own value that comes up to that, you know, sales price. So we set it, and we can now, we're still working on it, and the reason, we normally have mailed them out by the end of January with this market, we wanted to give them a little time to see what they would do, and we still can reflect our final value off of sales through to the end of December, even though, you know, it's the middle of January, first of February, we still can work on our, on our rates. Because the main thing is that, you know, we're far and ethical in the market, and if the market turn, how many turns after the first of January, one, February, it ain't nothing we can do, but if we go on a full year revaluation, that'll cut out the aspect of losing all that public utility money, and it'll be less detrimental, you know, to the citizens of the county to going from this value to this value. And, um, so I've been going around a lot and speaking to the senior citizens around in the county, and I've got to go to Eden, Madison, and other different areas to speak and just let them know, you know, about the concessions and, and DAB things that are out there to help them with their values, because the, the values, unless the house is in really, it's really shape from what we're seeing, those values are going crazy. But, um, but the state mandates us to do it, um, when you're in a revaluation year, you send them in yearly, um, but during the other time, you send them in quarterly, and then they mandate us to do a certain percentage of our, our sales, and, and each county and state, you know, has to, has to do it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Question. Thank you, Mr. Hurst.
Thank y'all, sorry I'm wrong.
Thank you. Everybody here, we'll take a little break for a little. We'll take a break. We'll take a five minute break. Projects, consideration of lead service line. Yes, ma'am. Inventory contract recommendation and related budget ordinance amendment enclosure five, Josh Beller, Public Works Director, Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager, and Administrator of Financial Office.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Manager. Uh, so before you tonight, we've, we've been here before a couple of times about lead service, if you guys remember, um, those were more about the grant side of this, though if you recall, uh, one of those that we brought for you was to set up Lake Slaughter, our wire treatment plant superintendent as the grant administrator, if you will, for that particular grant. Um, we're still waiting to hear, we anticipate hearing how that went sometime around the first of February, um, but what I have before you tonight is the actual contract from a engineering firm, uh, who's kind of specialized in this, who took an early lead in this, uh, they're doing another, a number of other municipalities in the area, and they're doing this inventory for us that is required by EPA. Again, I know I mentioned this in the past, but that deadline to get this submitted to EPA, DQ, is October 16, 2024, so, um, not too far in the near future, but, uh, and that's why we wanted to go ahead and bring it forward tonight to make sure that those guys have time to go through this. For the new council members, just to kind of bring you quickly up to speed, this is basically in response to Clint, Michigan. Uh, and if you recall, that kind of hit during the Obama administration, when the current president was vice president, so this is in response to that, so that, uh, they mandate utilities to then start inspecting for lead service, and when we say that, we really are being from behind the meter. Technically, as a utility, we are not responsible for anything behind the meter, right? If you have a leak at your house and it's behind the meter, unfortunately, you pay for that water consumption. If it's in front of the meter, that's our responsibility, we'll also make that water service repaired as part of public works, but anything behind that, you need to get a licensed plumber to get that resolved. Uh, so what these guys will do, they'll work closely with us, they'll look at our tax records, they'll also look at a number of all of our building and plumbing permits to try to evaluate and understand when this particular structure was built, to understand what year it was built in, to then have an idea, was that in a time period when they were still using some potential lead service, uh, as well as galvanized and maybe with some lead fittings in, in front of it that would then also cause a reaction. Um, so it's quite the endeavor, our records here are on paper, not electronic, uh, so you'll see, one of the fees in here is data management, part of that process is for them to digitize those records as part of this, because this will be an ongoing thing, every three years, we'll have to kind of update this as we move forward, especially as we identify areas where it's really unknown what the current material is in that particular situation. Obviously, if you build a house in the last 20 years, they're going to rule that out pretty quick, uh, and that's kind of easy, but obviously, we're going to have a lot of homes that follow within these areas and where it's just going to kind of be unknown. They'll take that data, they'll look to see if some major plumbing revisions were done, and then kind of rule that out. So they'll go through, there's about 25 questions, if I remember. So they'll go through, there's about 25 questions, if I remember correctly, on this form, that they have to fill out for each service that we have. So, and we're roughly 68 to 7,000 connections that would be a part of this. It's a lot of work, especially since you've got about nine months, right, to get this done at this time. So what they presented to you tonight is this proposal in the amount of 122,560 to complete that. Again, it is a mandate from the EPA, it's not something Josh came up with overnight by any means. And again, it's broken down into three parts, project management for 22,300, 21,000 for that data management, and then 79,600 for the lead service inventory and submission to DEQ consultation team. If there's no questions to that, then I'll have Mr. Phillips come up and he can talk to you about the budget amendment necessary to pay for that service. Yes, ma'am.
So when they digitized their inventory, did that then become our property?
Yes, ma'am, because we'll have to continue. Like I said, every three years, we're going to have to update this again as changes occur. So it'll be kind of a live document, if you will. And again, having this now will make that process in a couple of years much more simplified because a lot of that lead work, if you will, is already done. We're only looking at any changes that may occur. Say you say one of your houses was an unknown, but you've recently done a plumbing revision, then we can pull that out of the unknown category and into a known, you know, acceptable material, PNC, whatever it is that you plumb your house with copper.
Does this digitize all records?
This will digitize the building and plumbing records, not if you did electrical renovation or mechanical, no, it would not.
Well, that, I mean, pertaining to it, all pertaining to it?
Yeah.
So it's not just a portion of it?
No.
Any other questions? Attorney General, here for this?
So, as Josh presented, the price tag for this is $125,000. So what we're looking for is to approve the contract. I guess that would be one motion, either want to do budget amendment as well to pay for it. So the 125,000 would come from our water fund reserves for this contract. We do have a grant application pending, and hopefully, we'll get 100% of the funding to that grant. But if we wait to find out about the grant, the guys will have a valid contract for it in line. We need to go any different starting. If we did the grant in, I can come back and reverse the entries of the 125,000 water reserves. But for now, you know, I assume the proof contract will approve the budget.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the recommended contract? That motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Did you get that vote?
Yes.
Okay. Now we need a motion to approve the budget ordinance amendment.
Agreed.
Motion on the second. Any discussion? Those in favor? Thank you. Next item, consideration of redundant water line easement negotiation proposal accompanying budget ordinance amendment and capital ordinance amendment, enclosure six, Josh Beck, Chris Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am. You guys will also recall, we've brought this to you several times as well. One of the presentations, of course, we've talked about the route of this proposed redundant water line, so I'm not sure if you remember that. We brought a separate one for that contract to do, you know, lots of materials for this. But at the time that we brought all that forward, we didn't truly have the design, we knew a route, right, that we were going along 29 Business. But until we got survey data and actual, a true alignment of the water line on design in a paper form, we really didn't know exactly where the roadway was, what existing conflicts we may run into. So trying to estimate at that time what the utility needs would be and what we'd need to negotiate at the time was very difficult. Truthfully, you drive down 29 Business and you look at the power pole placements, which is a general indication of roadway, you'll see that they are fairly wide. But what we determined is that DFT does not have the best of records in that area, it's not a recent renovation project like Freeway Drive where they would have a better location of their roadway. So in this, it was determined that 34 easements would be needed as part of this project. I'll remind you that the total length of this is roughly 15,000 and some change, so we're crossing many properties, but for the purposes of this, we only needed 34 easements. The design firm McGill recommended this company, which is Rightway Consultants. There's a couple firms in the state that do this, but not many. And so we started working with them, of course, we talked to you guys on some two-on-twos about how we wanted to proceed with this. They had some questions for us about various aspects of the negotiation. We got y'all's feedback on that, presented that back to them. And so what I have before you tonight is the negotiation part of this and an estimate, if you will, on the appraisals that are needed. Until they really get into some negotiations, there may be some additional funding needed if we have to go down certain avenues that, in order to end them, if necessary, some of these parcels. Obviously, the water line, as you know, we can come one way, we can come the other, but if we don't get all the easements eventually, in some form or fashion, we'll think that. I think we all agree this is a very vital project. The current line was built in the late 70s, so the existing water line that is there today is nearing the end of its service life, and without it, we simply can't provide water to the city pretty well. So the contract before you tonight is for 201,800 for that initial consulting and negotiating with this company, again, Rightway Consultants LLC, to begin the easement acquisition process for this project. They will continuously keep us updated. I'm sure we'll have some meetings in the future about what their status is, where they are in some of these, you know, how it's going, that sort of thing. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this particular contract. But again, it's necessary to begin the construction of that water line. Yes, ma'am?
The negotiation fees, the 34, is that what they propose the average to be?
Yes, ma'am.
So it could go up or down?
Well, there's 34 easements needed, so that's how they base their price. And then based on the feedback we provided, they then came up with that unit price fee per easement required.
So that could change, is what I'm asking of.
Um, no, I don't think that will change. What will change is possibly the number of narratives or the title searches that are needed. You know, we talked a little bit internally that if we have to go certain routes, then there will be additional services from them to work with Bill and myself and go through those processes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
So, again, if you all approve this contract, we need to pay for it. So the budget amendment, there's two pieces of budget ready for this one. The first one, budget ordinance amendment number 13, is to allocate water reserves for this purpose. So 202,000 of a budget there. But this is a capital project, a water line project, so there's a capital project fund. Capital project fund is used when a project's going to go more than one year or has a special fund, if you set it in a separate fund, to keep the account separate. So we have a redundant water line capital project fund. So the second piece is to amend that capital project fund as well, to show the 202,000 comes from the water fund to that fund to be spent on professional services. So we approve, we approve the contract, then we need to approve the budget ordinance amendment number 13, and then approve the redundant water line capital project for
All right, there's no questions. Can we get a motion for the redundant water line easement negotiation proposal? All right, we've got a motion on the second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we need a motion for budget amendment 13.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. And thirdly, we need a motion for the capital budget fund for the redundant water line.
Motion for that.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
And we've got a second. Any discussion? All right. Next, consideration of bids received for the wastewater treatment plant, biological neutral removal, project accompanying budget ordinance amendment and capital project ordinance amendment, enclosure seven, Josh.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll sit down after that's finished. Actually, you know, for once, some good news. So you guys may recall that we actually opened these bids back on March 9th, and you'll see there in my memo that the base bid at that time was 8.62 million dollars. I'm excited to bring to you tonight that when we opened them on November 16th, the lowest bid that we received from Turner Murphy was actually 7.637, so just shot a million dollars. And we truthfully, we changed a few things. We extended the contract by a few months, and that was one of the concerns. Some of the contractors in that first bidding expressed, and we changed some unit quantities a little bit because we felt there were a little too months that we needed for, on some of our slush, all of the different things that would be required. So tonight, before you, I've provided several attachments, certified bid tab, which I've outlined there, showing the base bid pricing, and then six different alternates that were also proposed. Again, you know, when we opened in March, we weren't going to be able to accept any of those due to the overall cost of that project. But coming in under a million dollars from that number, we would greatly appreciate if you guys, as part of this, will accept, of course, Turner Murphy and their base bid price, but also the five alternates that I've listed at the bottom of the page. I'm happy to touch base on any of those if you have any questions. One of them I didn't feel was really necessary, is about $100,000, and so I removed that one from this. But there's, like I said, there's several things in here, so the first one is the bid information sheet. So with the base bid information and the alternates, you can then see on the project cost summary, that is the total cost of the project now. Again, taking those alternates, it still comes in about half a million less than we previously discussed, probably on some two-on-twos, maybe April, May, somewhere around that timeframe when we went over all of our capital projects. But so that shows you all the legal fees, some of the design contingency, et cetera, certified bid tab. And then at the very back is a resolution tentative award. So what I'm asking tonight is that you approve this tentative award because we still need to go back to the LGC for final funding. You know, after the bid was open in March, we did get the verbal approval for 5 million more, but obviously, there's paperwork associated with that. So this will be a tentative award until that funding is officially approved. Also, in that resolution, it will assign, City Manager orders as giving authority to sign up on some contingency dollars as change orders come in. We don't want to bring up a $3,000 minor electrical issue to you while holding up an 8 million dollar profit, if that makes sense. So that would give her authority within the contingency. And then the final thing that we do is it would actually set up a contingency in an amount of 401,700, which is roughly 5%. So we're asking for the base bid, with the five alternates, set up a contingency, and then also give this order just part of that tentative award, the authority to execute change orders in the contingency. If it goes over the contingency amount, that's a different situation that we have to turn back to funding. That's just within that 400, might as well say 400,000. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I did a lot at you right there.
Yeah, it was hard to keep up.
It is, it's a lot. It's been a long time coming, if you think about this project and, you know, when the design started and now we're finally here and we're ready to actually get started, it's, for me, it's exciting. I know the plant staff are excited. It will allow some additional capacity at the plant for future growth, so it's a good thing.
When do you think they'll get started?
So initial conversations with them, similar to headworks, they want to do a delay notice to proceed. This is, again, fairly heavy equipment, so they want to, of course, get through some middle process and get pumps here and get, you know, valves and some of those larger items here. So they want to delay it six months from when we give them the notice to proceed, which in talking with staff, there's no real point to mobilize and be in the operations' way and not really achieving very much. So we're in agreement with that, and then it's about 18-month construction timeframe after that. So I wouldn't foresee anything that would probably fall.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Any other questions on these minutes for Turner?
Okay, so if you all do approve the contract that Josh just presented, then we got to handle financing for it. So the original financing for this project was provided by DEQ, the zero-interest loan, 20-year payback, no interest. And we also had $500,000, half a million dollar grant from Gilbert Lea that we still have for the project. So DEQ did tell us when we went back that the project was going to be more, that they have funding. So they have approved us on the DEQ side for additional funding, but the local government commission has to approve debt issues. So the local government commission has agreed to put this on their February agenda to be approved at the state level. So that's why the contractor's pending that final approval from the local government commission. But I prepared a memo that just kind of showed you the original ordinance that was adopted in April of 2018, where the project budget was forming in 542,351. The new project budget is 9,537,608. So you have a capital project ordinance amendment to report the difference, which is 4,995,257. Almost all of that is going to be covered under the loan, the zero-interest loan. The only thing that's not covered is you have to pay a, there's no interest, but you pay a 2% fee to the state with our money through this program. So that 2% fee, you cannot use their money to pay them, so that has to come out of our reserves. So the additional fee on the additional amount is 97,946. So budget ordinance amendment number 14 takes 97,946 from the sewer fund reserve and moves it to the capital project. That's the money we're going to have to put, additional money we're going to put in for this project. And Josh did mention that the City Manager has authorities to approve change orders under the contingency, but the capital project ordinance we adopted, and it's in here, again, with this amendment, those are change orders that are 50,000 and below. Any change order over 50,000 would have to come out of the city account. Any change order over fifty thousand would have to make some adjustments work.
So, when you said that they approved the additional amount, and that will be at zero percent interest too?
It'd be at the same, yeah, they told us they had money. It would be at the same, um, rate in turn as the original financing.
Thank you.
It's hard to beat zero.
We'll take it anyway, right?
Well, a grant, a, a grant means zero loan, but, uh, they didn't offer that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chris. Josh? We have a motion to approve the, uh, DNR capital project amendment.
Motion.
Okay.
We have a motion on second. End of discussion. Very good. Those in favor? Thank you. Yep. Yeah. A motion to approve budget ordinance amendment number fourteen.
So moved.
Okay.
Got motion on second. End of discussion. Those in favor? Now, let's... And finally, capital project ordinance amendment. A motion to approve that. Count time.
This is for a resolution. Remember the resolution for the tentative award, it's just the thousand one that's added without the, uh, book information.
Okay, but we still needed to do the capital, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion to approve... Robert, did you get that last one?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Did you get the last one, the capital project ordinance amendment?
Yes.
Okay, you in favor? Okay. And now, a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on second. End of discussion. All right, those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Item number ten, appointments of council liaison. I think I need to read those out, see where you are. And I'm also appointing, uh, Ms. Lisa Simpson to the housing authority board. That's a mayor and appointment, that's why. We had public comments. Do we have anyone that'd like to speak before council? Saying none, we'll move from there and go to managers for board.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be exceptionally brief, brief tonight. I did wanna just make a note, Mayor, if it's okay. Ms. Diane Sawyer with the Chamber of Commerce did reach out to me a few moments ago, and she will not be able to attend, so she does send her apologies. So, uh, just wanted to share that with you, there'd be no report tonight from, from the chamber. I did wanna just make a couple notes. First and foremost, I really wanna thank our IT department. You guys have one above and beyond to, as you see the new TVs, which is weird, look at yourself, I'm talking, see the new TV monitors. So, I think, I know we've had some glitches tonight, but I mean, what a team effort on our IT staff to make this possible to where we're not rolling in a single TV. So, just bear with us as we continue to move through these changes, but just thank you on behalf of, um, all of us for all that you do for IT for us. And then, just a couple more announcements. I did just wanna let each of you know, I'll be sending out an email in reference to our upcoming retreat. We are looking at Thursday, February the fifteenth, and Friday, uh, February the sixteenth. So, two-day retreat. It would be from eight-thirty AM till one PM both days, and we're hoping to possibly have it at the new event center at the penthouse. But more detail's to come. I'll send out an email, just to go ahead and put those dates and let me know if those dates would not work for you. And then, the final announcement I had, I sent out an email earlier this week just to mark your calendars. They're doing something a little different this year with the North Carolina League of Municipalities State Dinner. Instead of everyone going to Raleigh like we have in the past, they're actually going to host at different locations. So, I sent out an email earlier, uh, this week, but just go ahead and lock in. The closest one for us would be us to attend at Winston-Salem, and that would be March the twentieth. So, more information to come. We don't have a, a specific time yet, but go ahead and mark your calendars for March the twentieth. It'd be in Winston-Salem, and as soon as we get more information, we'll share that. And if there's no other questions, I'm happy to address my report, but I'll yield my time and turn back over to Mayor and Council. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Mayor Proten, Brian, for Council reports. No report this one. Councilwoman Harris.
Very brief. Attended the, attended the Reevesville Municipal Alliance Assembly meeting on November twenty-seventh. Also attended the Human Relations Commission meeting on November twenty-eighth. Also attended the community meeting, uh, Up With Christ and Down With Pride that was held at Zion Baptist Church. I didn't put the date back, but I was there. Also, um, as always, it just was absolutely delicious. December the twenty-first, Public Works Barbecue. And, uh, just enjoyed fellowship there with the city employees. And then, uh, the grand get-together. What a, what a, what an honor for me to be there for the whole city. December the twenty-second, uh, the bird, bird of the Time Castle. That's why I said tentative, tentative. Anyway.
Says what?
That's why, that's why.
Says what?
I, I tempted. But that's my report.
Councilwoman, what does your name?
Oh, I, good afternoon. I just wanna say thank you for allowing me to, uh, attend, uh, deals soon because of my illness. But I was, in November, I attended the National League of Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, swearing in at the City Hall. And then, the twelfth, uh, December fifteen, thirteen, I'm sorry. I attended the Golden Leaf Christmas Party, and after that, I was unable to attend anything else. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Coats.
Uh, December seventh, I was able to attend the city employee luncheon as a retiree at that point. So, that was fun. And on the nineteenth, I attended the Coffee with a Cop at, uh, La Boca, Boca, if I'm saying that right. And at the Sip House, I think it was the same day that afternoon, cookies from Santa, and also as well as the Time Castle, Bird of the Cock.
Councilwoman Masco.
No report, sir. Thank you.
Councilwoman Martin.
I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Genesis, along with the mayor, various other chamber events, Public Works Barbecue, the employee luncheon, Time Castle event, and, uh, the CED, uh, there being that, 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 that.
I'm gonna forward my report and give another formal welcome to Councilwoman Coats, Councilwoman Martin, to, to the big guests. Appreciate you being here. You know, we'll be in this for a break.
It'll be a good year.
And I also wanna say that, uh, proud and happy to work for citizens of Reevesville to have the best staff. In this situation. Our employees go the last, the extra mile to, to make Reevesville the best place that it can be. I appreciate that, Martin.
Mayor, I'd like to say this one other thing.
Okay.
I just wanna say that, uh, just kudos to Assistant Senate Manager Chris Phillips and all the community that worked with him, didn't outsmart y'all on that event, Bird of the Time Castle. And also, just for, you know, each month, the special things that you had going on and whatnot. A lot of hard work was put into it. Really appreciate it. Also, I, I, I wanna make sure I say this because, uh, my wife wants me to do it too. It was absolutely beautiful out of downtown with the Christmas decorations. All the hard work was put into that. Absolutely beautiful. I mean, no, no one, no one around had, uh, more beautiful downtown than we, uh, than we had in Reevesville. So, we thank all the city boards, hard work and best of the day.
We had people from Winston-Salem, from Greensboro, from Virginia, and all around to come and take pictures. A lot of them, Barbie, and there were a few kids then, too. So, you, you get the nail on the head there.
There was Barbie of all ages.
That, that's right.
Was that Barbie's car?
Well, that was a very popular car. Very popular. All right, next we'll be moving to the first full conference room for a closed session to consult with an attorney to pursue the attorney-client privilege, pursuant NCGS one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight, uh, eleven, eight, three, and five. We will not be returning to the chamber, so we appreciate everyone. Thank you.